At the point of the workshop, I've been somebody asked if did anybody else review the contract, Mr. Chapman is here. Would it be appropriate with your, with the court if we could have them?
Sure.
Mr. Chapman, Mr. Hancock, you want to address his work?
Yes, I did at the request of Mr. Hancock, reviewed the service agreement amendment that is before you today. And I also reviewed briefly this morning all of the other contract documents which have been executed with respect to the facility. The particular questions that I was asked to address by Mr. Hancock was first my evaluation of an opinion that was written by a lawyer from Fulbright Jaworski in San Antonio with respect to paragraph three point zero four of the service agreement which is before you. That paragraph is the paragraph which obliges the county to cooperate with GEO in the execution of any contract documents which are presented to it in the furtherance of the operation of the facility and the continuation of the terms of the original service agreements the county entered into, I believe was back in ninety-eight. One of the questions that was addressed in that memo was with respect to the county's immunity from suit pursuant to chapter two seventy-one of the Local Government Code. And I'm here specifically to address that for the court as well as to offer other statements regarding my analysis of additional contents of the service agreement which is before the court today. Let me begin by telling you that I agree with the assessment of the Fulbright lawyer with respect to the application of chapter two seventy-one of the Local Government Code as it relates to immunity from suit. The courts in the state of Texas have determined for quite some time now that counties as a local governmental entity have immunity, have sovereign immunity. However, the courts have stated that that sovereign immunity is waived as far as liability when counties enter into contracts with private entities. The county's immunity from liability is separate and distinct from the county's immunity from suit. Counties only waive sovereign immunity from a lawsuit if legislature expressly waives that immunity. And in this case, because we're dealing with a contract for services, the county's immunity from suit has been waived by the legislature pursuant to chapter two seventy-one. That is exactly what the Fulbright lawyer said, and that's where he stopped his analysis. What the county needs to know, what the court needs to know as far as your waiver in order to evaluate the legal ramifications of entering into or not entering into this agreement is what might happen if you do or you don't sign the agreement. With respect to chapter two seventy-one and the immunity issues that are at play, the statute, the legislature and the courts specifically state that the county waives your immunity if the contract you enter into is a contract for services. That does not mean that the contract must be primarily for the provision of services, but it means that there must be an essential term in the contract that services are being provided to the county. In this case, the contracts that you've entered into, as they currently read with this amendment, would provide you the service of housing thirty inmates or providing you thirty beds in the facility. Now, in a facility that is a two thousand bed potential facility, thirty beds is not the primary purpose of that contract. However, there is case law which supports the fact that immunity would be waived because the county is receiving that service from GEO. What that means is with respect to GEO is that GEO could sue the county if we choose not to sign this amendment and not go forward with our obligations in section three point zero four of the contract. Not signing the amendment would not in and of itself negate the rest of the contract. The facility would not necessarily close in the contract, the underlying agreement would not necessarily be voided by your failure to sign three point zero four, although I believe that GEO would have the opportunity if they chose to do so to argue that your breach was a material breach and it might forgive them from having to continue with the service agreement with the county. That may have an effect of moving the facility to another county, it may not. That's something that would be determined later on by the actions of the parties. However, with respect to your potential liability, the statute states that the county is only subject to damages for a breach of the contract for the amounts that are due and payable under the contract and any associated delay damages that the vendor or contractor suffers. Now, the language in the statute is clear that originally the statute was drafted with respect to construction contracts. In fact, it was a statute that was particularly focused on contractors who had sued the county for breach of a construction contract. The legislature responded by enacting the statute. The statute has been used for contracts that are not construction contracts. And there was a recent case for Love County dealing with a lease agreement for public property. The court in that case held that the waiver applies to service contracts, but the damages provisions that are in section two seventy-one one five three also apply, and one must look at those damage provisions to determine what the county's liability is. In this case, the county does not pay GEO anything. In fact, the county receives money from GEO in return for your efforts and your costs in administering various aspects of the service agreements and the transfer or the allowance of the transfer of detainees to this detention facility. The only damages that GEO could potentially claim based on my analysis of the documents that I've read today and yesterday is the damages of the additional money they might receive by the admission of these additional detainees to the facility. I believe that's in the magnitude of two million or some other amount of money per month as a flat fee. Now, those damages would be consequential damages. If you did not allow the expansion of the facility, GEO as a consequence of your denial would suffer damages because it would lose the ability to collect its additional revenue from ICE for housing these individuals. The county is not liable for those damages. The statute specifically says the counties are exempt from liability for consequential damages and other component categories of damages which are particularly applicable to construction contracts. However, in this case, there are no direct damages relating from the service agreement because there are no dollars that the county owes to GEO in the performance of these agreements. So, my analysis from the initial reading and my knowledge of the current case law and the statutory structure is that should the county choose not to go forward, yes, you would be breaching an agreement, yes, you would be waiving your immunity, but you would likely be insulated from damages with respect to a lawsuit from GEO because unless there are other damages at this point that I'm not aware of, the two million dollars they get from ICE are consequential damages and you're exempted from liability for that. That's the analysis on that end of the statute. Now, if the county chooses to go forward with the agreement, there are, there is language in this, is not liable for those damages. The statute specifically says the counties are exempt from liability for consequential damages and other component categories of damages which are particularly applicable to construction contracts. However, in this case, there are no direct damages relating from the service agreement because there are no dollars that the county owes to GEO in the performance of these agreements. So, my analysis from the initial reading and my knowledge of the current case law and the statutory structure is that should the county choose not to go forward, yes, you would be breaching an agreement, yes, you would be waiving your immunity, but you would likely be insulated from damages with respect to a lawsuit from GEO because unless there are other damages at this point that I'm not aware of, the two million dollars they get from ICE are consequential damages and you're exempted from liability for that. That's the analysis on that end of the statute. Now, if the county chooses to go forward with the agreement, there are, there is language in this. County incurs costs, and then once the bill is settled, the county sends an account statement to GEO and says, please indemnify us for this cost. The word defend has been held to mean that GEO has to upon tender of an obligation of defense actually pay for the defense of the county in any lawsuit that might be filed as a result of its operation of the facility. Because the county isn't actually doing anything at the facility other than allowing it to be here, any lawsuits involving its operation, any lawsuits involving the treatment of detainees, any lawsuits that are filed against GEO for civil rights violations or any other administrative costs that relate to that facility are subject to indemnification by GEO. All the county has to do is send them a notice of a right to be indemnified and GEO is supposed to perform and pay for that. If GEO does not do that, that is a breach of the agreement by them. Having said that, what I would recommend you do if you're inclined to sign this amendment is have GEO add language in the indemnity provision which would reimburse the county for all costs, expenses and fees incurred in addition to just what it says here because that would give you the right to get reimbursement for any fees, any costs, any expenses incurred as they relate to this contract as opposed to a lawsuit filed or alleged breach thereof. For example, my time here today, if you add the cost, if you add cost and fees language, that cost for that time could be presented to GEO as an indemnified obligation. And therefore, the county would be fully insulated based on this provision from the expenditure of any kind relating to allowing GEO to operate its facility in your county. That's the extent of my report to the court with respect to the liability, contractual liability issues. Do you have any questions? I'm glad to expand on what I've said, and I hope you found it somewhat helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. But one question I had was, I've been hearing everyone talking here, and then I heard that one gentleman, I don't remember his name, but he worked for GEO for seven years, I guess he was a former employee. He mentioned something about there not being enough employees to watch over the detainees. Now, can, in the contract, can that be put on that we have to have, they have to have enough employees? How do you justify how many employees watch over, how many people that are there?
Well, I don't necessarily have an answer to that right now, but I will tell you that in the, in the agreements that you've signed, there are certain terms and provisions that GEO has agreed to follow that have been promulgated by ICE. And that if GEO is not performing as those regulations or requirements would require, the county may have cause to declare GEO to be in default and demand that GEO correct that if the county is to sign this amendment. That would be a factual determination, it would be a further examination of the ancillary obligations in the contract that don't relate solely to liability, to cost and immunity. But it's certainly something that the county can choose to enforce, I believe, based on what just in my first review this morning, the terms that are included in some of the amendments that have been previously signed by this county.
How would we enforce that? What kind of enforcement can we do? Who do we send out there to check over to see if it's the proper amount of staff out there?
Well, like I said, I don't know. I don't have an answer for that question right now, but I do believe from looking at the contract, there are obligations that are there, and we'd have to see if the contract has in it any, any rights with respect to remedies or notice. And if it doesn't, if the county's interested in building this into the agreement, that can be done.
Okay. Mr. Chapman, there's been a lot of concerns here that, I guess, we're waiting to see what President Obama does, you know, if he's gonna release everybody, or I don't understand how this is happening yet right now, but several citizens have expressed concern that an order could come down and then GEO would pretty much just open the doors and let everybody out, and everybody's scared that the community would inherit a population that we would have to take care of in our schools, in our hospitals, in our cities, and in the county. But, you know, I personally feel that's highly unlikely, but what is?
Well, I don't know what's gonna happen with the executive order and the implementation of that order with respect to this particular facility. I can tell you that the indemnity language does not appear to be broadly enough written that it, that it would cover any consequential costs or ancillary costs that the county might incur as a result of action by the federal government or the cancellation of, you know, current immigration policy. Now, I could go back into the contracts and verify whether the county's indemnified or GEO is obliged to pay for any costs relating to the closure of the facility, which in your question, that is exactly what would happen. I don't know that the contract currently contemplates that happening with respect to releasing any individuals who are currently housed there. In fact, when it was originally written, it was, it was a facility, a correctional facility, and that would not have happened without the transfer of those inmates to another facility. With it being changed to a detention facility, the amendment changing the character of the facility from detention to, you know, detainee facility for immigration and processing, there weren't any additional terms written into the amendments other than changing the purpose of the facility. And so, I don't know that the original agreement ever contemplated the possibility there would be a release of all people housed there. And if that is a legitimate concern of the county before the county chooses to go forward, that's something that would need to be further worked out with GEO as far as location of placement or costs relating to placement if the detention facility closed and everybody who was there were released to their own recognizance.
I think the last meeting that we had with GEO, I think we asked them that question. They said that wouldn't happen. But yeah, of course, we would want it in the contract. Of course, we would want it in the contract.
I'm sure they're gonna say that. But yeah, you would. And if they, even if, if they don't anticipate that happening, then whatever provision you would want to write into the contract regarding their liability for that occurrence happening, they could assign the value or the risk associated with that, the appropriate level of weight based on their belief or their evaluation of whether that might ever happen. If they don't think it'll ever happen, then they should have no problem in changing provision which says they pay any costs. So.
We have a detention facility and an ICE facility, a detainee facility, and one is tied to the other in the contract. It's that thick, it's thick, it would go the wrong way back.
Yes.
It's hard for me to go through all that and understand everything that's in there, and I'm sure it's kind of difficult for you to say you understand every word that's in it.
I'm not gonna say I understand every word that's in there. I did, I will tell you that I read through the binder that Judge Long is holding this morning during this meeting, and I made my way through it as best I could looking for the particular provisions which addressed potential costs, services provided, damages and liability. I did not look at it to understand all of the other obligations that GEO might have agreed to perform with respect to maintenance operations or care of the facility or the people who are currently residing there.
All right. I know you've touched on the possibility that the facility would shut down if we didn't sign this agreement and they moved it somewhere, as you basically alluded to that a little bit. We don't know what's, that's gonna happen. We don't assume it is.
Correct.
All right. If we don't agree to this, we don't agree to expand the facility from what it is today, I assume that they will continue to operate their detention, their criminal facility and their detention, their immigration facility. And what is the possibility of us losing our thirty beds if we don't sign this agreement? What is the possibility of losing our ten thousand dollars that pays if we don't sign this agreement?
The possibility of losing the services provided, particularly this amendment, are significant. However, the underlying agreements also provide for the payment of certain money to the county and the provision of a certain number of beds, I believe the remainder is fifteen beds. If we don't sign this amendment, the remainder of the agreement would arguably remain in full force and effect, and therefore, what the county is currently getting under that agreement should remain constant. What the county expects to receive under this amendment would not materialize.
I, for one, would like to see that, the language, the first part that you said about the, I can't remember what the exact word was, but about the damages.
Yes, the indemnity obligations.
I'd like to see that put into place and also to somehow address the question that I asked about, you know, just the what if, you know. I think for the citizens of the county, it's something that we should look at. I have no, no problem with the facility being there. I have no problem with the facility being expanded. I would just like to make sure that our, our community is, and the county government is covered to the best, that we can do it legally and give us some type of insulation or protection.
So basically, something put in there that there will not be a full release of the detainees into this county?
Exactly.
We can certainly talk to GEO and negotiate for additional terms and bring those back to the court for your consideration.
That's my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the court feels, but that's my personal opinion.
Detainees to be moved on out, go back where they come from or whatever. They don't need to be let out around here.
I suspect that GEO will want to tie whatever provisions we negotiate to current or future federal regulations. So, I mean, we may be limited as far as dictating what happens to any individuals who are released from the facility, but what the county's primary concern with, and what you can control, I believe, would be potential costs and impact on the community. And I believe that if GEO doesn't believe that that would ever happen, they shouldn't be too resistive to including language like that in the agreement. But we can certainly talk to them and find out what they say and bring back any proposed language to the court.
I certainly feel like there's room for further negotiations and detailed writings in this contract before we approve it.
I don't have a problem with the facility, but I would want additional writings in here on our part, things that we would want. Does he know?
Herb, have you looked at this at all?
I've looked at it, Judge, and I asked him to look at it. He is the expert on contracts, and I defer to him as far as his opinion. He knows, he knows a lot about contracts. Depend on him to know what to tell us and direct us to approach.
Herb, I know it's on the agenda here to approve or disapprove or discuss what we're doing right now. If we would approve it or disapprove it, say we would approve it right now, could we approve it with the changes that we're asking for and then come back? Or is it, is it better just to discuss it right now, come back, rewrite this, and then approve it the way we want it rewritten?
It's probably better to table it and reconsider it once the additional language you're requesting is included and evaluated. There's always a possibility that GEO will refuse to further amend the agreement at which point you don't want to have on record an approval.
Of course.
And so, it's best if you don't want to approve it as is to table it and where you can deem when is appropriate to do so.
So basically, it's take no action until this is rewritten?
Correct. Which you can always take no action and post on a future agenda.
Herb, have you anticipated how long it might take to renegotiate, or I don't know whether we need to negotiate? He is scheduled to be back here tomorrow. I was gonna talk to you about, so I know we probably could get started on it tomorrow. I don't know about GEO and the representatives that would be necessary to negotiate a contract like this, but we've got other things to negotiate, and that is the administrative fee has got to be settled, and that has not been settled at this time. The offer on the table is one that Judge Butler accepted, so that is a fee issue that needs to be negotiated also. And the issues that y'all won't settle and put in the contract, all of those could be addressed in probably one or two meetings with GEO. And we can start tomorrow if we can get with GEO at this time. I don't know where the lawyers are gonna come from to come down here to talk to us about this because these amendments are substantial in a lot of ways.
I see the GEO people here, are y'all agreeable to further negotiation on this contract?
Yes, sir.
She's not the attorney, I don't believe. She's not an attorney.
No, sir.
I don't believe.
I'm the executive vice president of the administration.
Yeah, that was close, but. But are y'all willing to further negotiate this way?
Yes, sir. I would like to ask the court, you have two items on the agenda. One's the IGSA and one is the contract administration. The IGSA is the service agreement between you and the federal government. There are no terms in there to negotiate. We are more than willing to negotiate anything you'd like in our amendment. I don't know if you want to table both of these or if we could get the IGSA.
I'd like to table both of them until we have a chance to look at both of them this morning.
Do we have everything you need to look at?
Yes.
And y'all, what is, what is your concern about time?
Obviously, the federal government is under fighting obligations.
Well, they're not, they're not worried about that.
They, they kind of are.
Well, I don't think so. Whether it depends on whether they will accept it or you will accept it.
Well, I mean, we would be announced by the client, you know, as soon as we can get this signed because there are felony allegations that they have to go through, et cetera. Obviously, it's up to the court how you want to proceed. You know, we're here to negotiate whatever you want.
I think the court's interested in pursuing this to some extent, but we need to do it in a way that's, that's careful, careful, and also gets done as soon as we can to not hold it up for y'all and accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
May I suggest that we have the seventy-two hours of posting of the new agenda items on these two items?
Well, we had planned to, yeah, we could do that, and we'd, I'd planned to have another commissioner's court meeting next week, probably a work session next week, where we could incorporate into it at the same time my business to take care of this.
We need to know exactly what the commissioner's court wants us to negotiate and...
Well, the commissioner's court has to know that first. I'm not sure we do from what I'm hearing, but can you be available to meet with her next week? Or I'm not trying to do the thing that...
As far as I am available, on either Monday or Tuesday. And I plan on being down here tomorrow to meet with her and Redbridge, and I can meet on this issue of GEO if representatives are available. And if not tomorrow, then I can do it, I think, on Friday.
Can somebody that's responsible from GEO and has authority to talk be available tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's continue this through the lawyers and the folks from GEO. And I'm going to set a meeting for next week on, I think, on Wednesday if we can, and as a work session, there's a combination work session with a, with an action item on this matter. I don't want to hold it up. I want to conclude it in some way, one way or another.
We ask only that y'all tell us what items we are needing to address and what it is.
Well, y'all sit in if you've got a couple of more hours, and we'll start working on it, I guess. I don't think we're ready to say that, but, I mean, Herb, y'all have heard the discussion, and you've heard the discussion. Do you feel like you know what needs to be done at this point? Or do you need further direction?
I have a direction on three items that are concerns for the commissioner's court that I intend to address with GEO. And that is, that is the administrative fee, the additional indemnity language, and then language relating to costs or other concerns with respect to potential release. then language relating to costs or other concerns with respect to potential release of detainees if the government changes current policy.
Is there any member of the court that wants anything else studied or looked at by the attorneys?
Repeat those three that you have.
The administrative fee, that is right page to the county, additional language regarding indemnity, and then language relating to costs or exposure of liability for the county with respect to any release of detainees resulting from a change in federal policy.
Okay. What about the staff that I mentioned a little while ago?
We can look into that, too.
Okay. I also want that put under, just to make sure that it's, there's full staff at all times.
I hear one of the court members saying, whenever they're released, they want a provision in there that when people are released, they'll be released away from here, without a corncut.
Yes, thank you. I have one request. I'd like to see Section 3.04 have an expiration date where we can all relive in care of being sued for breach of contract.
Okay.
Can the G O people, somebody responsible, be available tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Will y'all, some of you get with the two attorneys and set up a meeting tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Is the court satisfied with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. And I'll schedule a meeting sometime for next week to get this over with. Anybody in G O wanna come in or say anything? Y'all all have anxious looks on your face. It's just business. I know y'all know that. Anybody on the court wanna say anything else, Ben?
No, just thank you very much for attending.
Okay, the next to that on the Florida action is a German that looks like a name.